Because I said I'll call, I'll call the guard almost from Royal Sock.
Yeah. Yeah, which was it your triggering of each back?
Right, right.
I saw it, he's like, I'm reading it, I think that's Mark.
Right, it's right.
I don't know what he's talking about. I don't know what he's talking about.
I don't know if the man was a pastor. I think it was. Because the girl I said that was just cash. He also went out yesterday and I didn't call him back. He said, well, we called him back. I didn't have no answer, so. And he said that he tried to separate Bush, Warren, all of them. This whole thing, it's a suicide, but you said that we all love the other.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense not to.
It's crazy.
Well, that's what it's all about. And it's not even.
I think you and I should.
Yeah. That had been.
Aren't we all in reality?
Well, but regardless, they've been here, how long? How long did I have to be in here before they give us that?
Sure. I mean, let's get on the calendar. You know, our lawyer.
No, John.
And then we're going to give the calendar next week.
Our lawyer, they called John.
Oh, John, yeah.
Yeah. And John lived in Royal Sock. He was up in the. Now, now is that big house in Warner Marst. Oh, that's just fine. So John's married to the.
He started at Ballard Bowers.
Yeah. Yeah, Bowers.
I just know that was John.
Yeah. Yeah, all right. Those are Jeff, Jeff. Oh, John. Yeah, they're both.
Yeah. And he tells us.
So he's there. Yes, they were. How are you?
Good, how are you? Whenever he gets sick, I'm there.
Because I don't, I don't have any.
It is bad, man.
It's true, John, it's just.
It's worse for me.
This is the high point.
Oh, no.
She's the meat.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what I'm.
How are you?
Is that where you go to the back?
Oh, my God.
Oh, Seth? That'll probably be it.
He's helping you. Yeah, he'll be.
You guys from both?
Ah.
Why? This tape was. Seth. Wait.
Oh, hi, lady. Were you sitting there the whole time? Upset.
Upset.
Ready?
Ready.
Good morning, everyone, and ask you to please rise and open your prayer before, in the pleasure of allegiance, before we convene our commissioners' public meeting. The gracious God, we recognize and are thankful this day for the freedoms we have in this great land. Let us never forget that came with enormous sacrifice. It is vital that we remain on alert daily, as there are ones that want to take those freedoms. We are called to pray for those in authority, whether you agree or not with the leader, or to honor the position they hold with prayer and respect. When our leaders succeed in their decisions that are in accordance with your will, we will succeed as a whole. And on Monday, we'll reflect on President's Day. We're especially grateful for leaders like Washington and Lincoln. These two forefathers faced incredible opposition in their day. And your word is stressed and stated. You make nations great and destroy them. He enlarges nations and disperses them. These two leaders sought your wisdom daily. May we also seek your guidance and wisdom. May we remain one nation under God. We pray for our leaver, leaders to have a servant's heart and serve as you have placed them to serve. May we take the opportunity on this President's Day to reflect on our history and our country's anticipated future. Let us not be consumed by fear, anxiety, nor pride of man, for we will fall. Let's take the opportunity to pray for each other and thank you for that which is good. Let us be a nation that builds each other up in your love, and we ask for your hand to be over remaining in your grace and love and protection over our valley. These things we only request in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, evergreen, just as all. Morning, everyone, this time we convene our commissioners' public meeting and ask for approval in the minutes of the previous meeting. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
On both sides.
Aye, aye.
Gary. Do we have public comment on agenda items only at this time? None of the audience, I think you all, well, we don't. Any online?
No.
All right, we move on to reports. Kalen, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Is that any for your ratification or invoices due through February 21st, 2024, to be paid on February 14th, 2024, for $939,121.64? The breakdown is as follows, with 72.17% being funded by the general fund at $677,747.82. 13% is being funded by other grants and pass-through money at $122,119.65. 9.73% is being funded by RMS at $91,391.45. And 5.10% is being funded by escrow at $47,862.72.
Okay, a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Any questions or comments on the current environment summary? Here you go, on both sides.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then next I have voting to approve a wire transfer for bond payments to U.S. Bank for payment on February 12th, 2024, in the amount of $779,672.60.
Okay, a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. On both sides.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to personnel actions. Commissioner seeking your approval on the following personnel actions as condition offers of employment, subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions as outlined in attachment A. In the controller's office, Emily Snyder, accountant two, full-time replacement, $50,714.63 per year, 75 hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date February 18th, 2024. In the controller's office, Lori Weston, lead payroll AP specialist, lateral transfer, $27.39 per hour, 75 hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date February 18th, 2024. In the controller's office, Kalen Barnes, payroll AP specialist, full-time replacement, $1978 per hour, 75 hours per pay period, payroll transfer date February 18th, 2024, visible move as soon as possible. In the district attorney's office, Zoe Stoffenberg, clerk three, full-time replacement, $14.58 per hour, 75 hours per pay period, anticipated start date March 4th, 2024. In pre-release, Autumn Sheemaker, resident supervisor one, full-time replacement, $18.64 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, anticipated start date March 11th, 2024. In the prison, Heather Harvey, correctional officer one, full-time replacement, $20 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, anticipated start date February 25th, 2024. In the prison, Eric Shields, correctional officer one, full-time replacement, $20 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, anticipated start date February 25th, 2024. In the prison, Caleb Plank, bail release officer, full-time, $27.05 per hour, 75 hours per pay period, 1% compensation increase due to receiving a certification, retrodate January 21, 2024, which is the date of certification. And in resource management services, Andrew Weaver, equipment operator, full-time replacement, $20.70 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, anticipated start date February 20th, 2024.
Okay, if any motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Any questions or comments on these ironies? And by all means. On both sides?
Aye.
This time we recess commissioners' public meetings for salary report, if we need a salary report.
All right, salary board seeking your approval on the salary minutes of the previous meeting, February 8th, 2024.
Okay, motion?
I do them, so you guys.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. On both sides?
Aye.
Yes.
Salary board seeking your approval on the following salary board actions as outlined in attachment D. In the controller's office, request to reclassify the following positions. Senior accountant, pay grade 10 to a pay grade 11, effective February 18th, 2024. Accountant one, pay grade 10 to pay grade 9, effective February 18th, 2024.
I'd make that motion.
I'll say. On both sides?
Aye.
Aye. Can I ask you a question on that, though?
Sure.
Those, those positions are existing positions, but we don't have anybody in them.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, in budget and finance, request to reclassify the following positions. Financial analyst, pay grade 10 to a pay grade 9, effective February 18th, 2024.
I'd make that motion.
One second. On both sides?
Aye.
Aye.
In the sheriff's office, request to add the following positions, five full-time deputy sheriffs, effective January 1, 2024.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second.
While the sheriff's here.
Yes, Sheriff, would you like to make any comments?
Would he like to second?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay.
I'll, I'll comment once the.
Well, now's the time to second. So while you're coming up and making a comment, I'll make a comment. This was something that was approached by the former board commissioners due to the security concerns at the local district justices' offices. And we felt it was necessary, absolutely necessary, for the safety of the public, the safety of the staff, the safety of the judges, that we'd have adequate personnel there to keep those offices safe. So at that time, we placed in the budget to have five additional deputies to assist with that need in the community. And we passed that to budget time.
Thank you, commissioners.
Before you speak, Sheriff, just for my clarification, so there's three magistrate offices, and we were, we're gonna have five to help cover because of the amount of hours, is that correct?
There's five.
Oh, there's five district offices, so, okay.
Five also, we have, we have districts.
Oh, there's six. One to the courthouse. Thank you back there, magistrates.
We have, we have five in the field. And the five in the field, the five positions would cover about 85% of the five in the field, which is 100%, but we had already, we already had the plan, put together the, the ability to provide the additional 15% to cover as much of a full day as we can. Three of our MBJs are here, District Judge Gardner, District Judge Dieter, and District Judge Whitman. Together, the five field MBJs have 100, have 80 to 120 or more scheduled court proceedings in their courtroom weekly. That doesn't include all the walk-ins that they get. And they get a gamut of everybody that comes into their facilities and have very little to protect them when somebody's unhappy. The largest percentage of court appearances in our system begin at the MDJ level. The, the disputes between neighbors, the disputes within family, the family structure, all of the bad and even worse people come to the MDJ office first, and they have no protection. Their protection is to push an alarm and have it go to a monitoring center and maybe get a phone call from law enforcement to say, are you okay? Or maybe take 20 or 30 minutes to respond. And we can't, my team can't get there fast enough. If this was a county the size of Montour County, we could probably get there fast enough. But we're the largest county in Pennsylvania, larger than the state of Rhode Island, and eight square miles smaller than the state of Delaware. I get down to Commissioner Resina.
I didn't know that. I knew we were bigger than Rhode Island, eight square.
So we have to travel a long distance to help them, and they have no help. Their only help is that they run, hide, and fight, which, which isn't much, much help when you are facing really bad people. Crazy stuff has been going on in these MDJ offices. We're monitoring across the state, we capture the data, we send it to the state, we do the assessments, we've been doing assessments for a very long time. And four years ago, before COVID, we began the process. And the commissioners at that time were favorable, and it was Commissioner, Commissioner Mesker's first year. They were, the commissioners were favorable, but COVID struck, and everything, our whole life changed. So this is, this is an incredibly proactive effort to provide protection to staff who are very afraid. And every day, they don't know what's gonna happen in a day. If we were, you know, we've tried to dabble in it before. We do send a deputy when they call for, for, for assistance with a scheduled event, because an MDJ may know Mark Sortman, because you were there last time and you raised hell last time. So they're gonna call us to come and stand by. The problem is, we don't have crystal balls. Balls doesn't make a crystal ball yet, so we don't know when, if, when the violence is gonna erupt. This gives these offices, these judges, and their staff peace of mind. They don't have to, they don't have to sit on the bench and rule from the bench and be afraid to rule. Our judiciary should not be afraid to rule from the bench, because that could affect how they rule. And our staff should not have to be afraid to come to work. If you have experienced one violent incident in your life, you'll never forget that. And if it's in your office setting, your workplace, you'll never forget that. Every day you go in, you remember what happened last week with the crazy guy that came in, or lady that came in. This move really helps us to provide that protection. Now, I'd like Commissioner to take a minute, if you would, recognize and ask the judges if they would let you make a comment.
Yes, please, if the judges like to make a comment. Maybe say what goes on in your offices.
I would love to have that opportunity.
Judge, you got to come up to them, because we're on a live stream, if you don't mind. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Sure. I appreciate this opportunity. When I took office in January of 2022, it became very apparent to me how incredibly vulnerable I was in my office. I had known that prior to that, because in 2021, after the May primary, I began to address the issues with the former commissioners. But I did not realize how vulnerable I actually was. And I could go on and on and tell you all of the incidents that have occurred, but the bottom line is, one, I want to thank you for making the building that I'm in safer. But I want you to understand that while I sit in that building, you'll know at some point soon, in an off, or in a courtroom with nobody there with me, with a staff that cannot hear me, and no cameras in the courtroom, which I think could be beneficial. If something happens to me, nobody will know, and I likely won't even be able to get to a button or some other method of self-defense, because the table where the individuals sit is no further away than where Ms. Tunes is right now. And I've had people come straight up to me, try to rip files out of my hands, and try to get behind the bench. So at this point, I think it is not a matter of with, if, but when something will happen to one of us. My office, until Judge Gardner was appointed last year, was the only fully female staffed office. And law enforcement, though, was close. When I tested that, it took five, six minutes. By then, alone in the bench, I could be dead. And this is incredibly necessary. So to the extent that I believe that you are going to, I hope that you're going to vote in favor of all five of these positions, it will give me and my office staff much comfort to know that, although we're in a very small facility, that we have somebody there who has the skills and the experience to protect us from physical violence. Do you have any questions for me?
I, I said a general one, for all of you, at this level. How, what percentage of people that come before you are unrepresented?
The majority of the people that come through the office are unrepresented. And it's intangibles, such as so-and-so came in because his child got a truancy citation, and he's furious with the school district, but instead he tries to take it out on the office staff. So the ones that you would think would be the ones to be concerned with oftentimes aren't those. The one, the 30-something female who didn't look very strong or very dangerous, who came in to talk to me about a traffic citation, was the one who charged the bench and tried to take my file from me. I only found out later that she was also the same individual that ripped the traffic citation out of the hands of the state trooper that gave it to her. But because he wasn't present, because it wasn't a hearing, it was just a meeting, because she wanted to talk about the citation, I didn't have the information ahead of time to properly protect myself. And those are the times when things become incredibly dangerous. And again, in my office, my staff cannot see or hear me. There are one, two, three doors between us before I could get to them. Now, there is a door I can turn and retreat to, but in a room that is as small as the courtroom that I'm in, I might be lucky enough to do that, if I know, if I can tell, that the times that fights have broke out have been in landlord-tenant matters, not with a criminal case. For example, multiple times. So it, it doesn't seem, even though with an attorney in the room, the one time the unrepresented individual went after the attorney for the landlord. That's one of my 911 calls. Had a moped driven up into the building as well. And homeless people coming in, trying to use our facilities to clean up and use our bathrooms with large backpacks, that we don't know what's inside of them. It's scary. So I would appreciate if you would approve of this, so that we can begin to get on a path where we can feel safer.
Now, recently, there's been a video circulating across the country of a, of a gentleman being sentenced by the court, and he actually leaps up over the bench to attack the judge. And it's been replayed continuously on TV. There were several people hurt in that. He was just charged this week with attempted murder of the judge. You know, that can happen anywhere. Fortunately, that was a courtroom where there was security, or that judge might not be alive today. And that can happen anywhere. And so this is an extremely serious matter. For the public, we do not like to add positions to increase cost. And when it comes to public safety, the safety of the people that work in the system and the public, we're gonna make the necessary precautions to make sure that people can come to work knowing that they're safe, and they can go home safe. We'll do everything in our power, the best we can, to prevent incidences from happening in our county. Yes, Judge?
I'm gonna be very brief. My name is Gary Whitman, I'm the magisterial district judge in the Loyal Sock, Montoursville, South Williamsport area. In June, I will become the president of the Special Court Judges Association at the Commonwealth. That association has worked for almost five years now with the legislature, trying to get funding for what we're talking about here today. Like anything else in Harrisburg, everybody wants a piece of that limited pie. And we've been unsuccessful at the state level with the requests like the sheriffs are making here today. The sheriff, and I don't know how much of, Commissioner, I think you've seen it, but I don't know that the new commissioners have seen the packet that the sheriff has put together in regards to this request. It is a very thorough, very in-depth look at probably at most likely the last five years of incidents within the magisterial district courts. We've had, we've had assaults, we've had shootings, most recently in Fayette County. We have every type of incident occur in the court, and it's always, you know, the one where you don't see coming. On your criminal day, you have law enforcement there, because they're the appliance to all these criminal cases. So there may be that day where they are visually overwhelmed by the presence of law enforcement in the court. So they're kind of on their best behavior. But the other four days, or four and a half days that are in our court, there is virtually no presence. It's one thing if I sit on the bench before them, and because of things that I've done in my past, they're a little different in their reactions to judgments, verdicts. But we deal with the same thing that you hear every day. People who are already financially in peril, and they come before us because we're asking for money. Hey, you're behind in your payments. Well, we're like the last straw, all right? I've been floating, floating, floating for so long, and now you're to come in and telling me that I'm $540 behind on my payments. Yeah, I'm also behind on my rent, I'm also behind with domestics, I'm also behind on this. You're the last guy I need, guy or lady, that I need telling me what I need to do. And you get that snap reaction. This is an incredibly proactive step by the sheriff to address the issues. Everybody gets the opportunity for perfect hindsight once it happens. I don't care about hindsight. And I really don't. We have conversations monthly about, what do you want to do with your judges? Do you want to give them tasers? Do you want to give them pepper spray? You know, those of us who are concealed carry holders, I mean, is that, is that kind of what we want to do from the bench? I, I don't think so. It's a community court. We're supposed to be the place where people can come in and have that open discussion. But it's not on the docket every day. I get 10 people a day that walk in, and I think, does the judge have five minutes? Yeah, I have five. Yeah, I have five minutes for everybody. Absolutely, that's why I'm there. That's why we all sit there, because we have five minutes to give to people who are, you know, at that spot in time. And depending on how that conversation goes, it can get sketchy. This is a tremendous step. We are way ahead of the curve if you act positively upon this. And I'm asking that you take that into consideration when you make that decision. Thank you.
Good point, Judge, that often something has to happen before there's action taken. And, you know, they wait for the accidents to happen, then they put the red light or stop sign up after the tragedy. We want to put that, that off first before we have the tragedy.
You can talk to Ken George, who had his staff come and repair a four-foot by three-foot hole in my drywall where the defendant and two troopers rode around in my court long enough and got tossed through the drywall before he was finally taken into custody. The three-foot by seven-foot solid oak table that the guy flipped over on his way to the bench, he was tackled by two troopers. You know, if, if they're not there, that's a me-and-him issue in the courtroom. And, you know, I don't think that's what we want to present as, you know, our community Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any more judges?
I should look behind me.
Good morning. My name's Kirsten Gardner, District Judge down in the Muncie-Husville, Montgomery area. I am the newest to the bench. So my experience in this capacity is much lesser than the others I've spoken. But in my short time on the bench, I have realized the vulnerabilities that I have personally, and I think that my colleagues have as well. Just prior to me starting, my, my staff experienced an incident where there was an SDI Muncie inmate that was transported for a hearing in my courtroom. And an incident occurred where she got into the bathroom, ripped a, ripped a soap dispenser off the wall and started causing harm to herself, threatening the constables that were trying to intervene. And it caused a, an extreme disturbance, safety concern for my staff and those also present in the courtroom. My office where it sits, it sits in State Police jurisdiction. So Muncie to Montoursville is quite a bit of a, a drive when you're dealing in an emergency situation. So when my staff pressed that panic button, they got a call. Is everything okay down there? Well, it wasn't. And thankfully, the other local authorities were able to come in as well. But the, the safety risk that we are posed with every day is that I will have to wait generally for that fifteen-minute ride or ten-minute ride from State Police. I don't have that luxury of having security there in, within a matter of minutes. We are definitely vulnerable in our positions. We get calls from individuals daily where they are very aggressive with staff. You know, as has been stated by my colleagues here, we're dealing with individuals that don't understand the law, that don't understand the consequences to what has happened to them in their, in their, in their life. And they're upset. Some of them have mental health that we're not equipped to deal with on a daily basis. And when they come into our courtroom, we are trying to mitigate when they come in angry. We are doing our best, but we don't have any, any safety precautions in our courtroom. I think our office is equipped well enough, but we did do a, a recent safety assessment in my courtroom. And I just feel like I was unaware of, you know, the, the other vulnerabilities. I don't have a, a security system that allows me to push in any individuals that need to come into the courtroom with a security button. If I want my courtroom locked, I have to go unlock it and meet with the individuals that are coming into my courtroom personally. It's not a matter of me being able to buzz them in to, and meet behind the bench. I have to leave my bench to let them into the courtroom. So I think it would be really beneficial to be able to have some sort of sheriff presence there to keep us safe. We don't know, sure, there's signs on our doors that say no weapons permitted. Who's checking? Who's going to stop them from bringing those weapons? And we don't know. With a sheriff deputy presence, I think a lot will be prevented. And I, I'd hate to wait for something to happen before we do something. I think it's best to be proactive and keep our court safe and our staff, so. Thank you.
I have an alibi.
Don't you just give one shout at the microphone?
I just want, I just want to mention to the, to the public here that in the county system, with Executive Plaza, the courthouse in Thirsty Plaza, our top-notch maintenance team headed by Director Ken George, who's sitting back there trying to hide, his staff install emergency desk alarms. And we have, how many, Ken, seventy, eighty? I can keep adding, no limit. So we have eighty in every single office in this county system with these three buildings. So if somebody, the, the key for staff to call us isn't wait for an emergency. I hate that word because who defines an emergency? So the guideline is if you get scared in your office of, of some outside influence, you push that alarm. When that alarm gets pushed, and many of the staff in here have experienced it, I will guarantee we have deputies at that location within thirty to sixty seconds. That's a benefit we have with our courts, with all of our county offices in these three buildings. It doesn't, we can't, it doesn't work when we're a county this size and we've got to go to Judge Whiteman's office, or we have to get to Judge Dieter's office. We rely on, on the primary law enforcement entity. The other point I want to make is last year, when we screened in the courthouse with a hundred signs and uniformed deputies who have been there now, Commissioner, for what, ten years? We would think people would know you don't take guns into the courthouse. Two years ago, we intercepted about forty guns. Last year, we intercepted twenty guns in screening, and seven hundred other weapons. It's not getting safer, and this proactive effort by the commissioners is really impressive. If you look at any of these videos that we provided in our, in our discussions with the Commissioner's office, and with everyone who's part of this, the team that's put this together, and I don't want to exclude Commissioner Metzger, we have District Court Administrator Stahl here also. The videos are riveting. We just had training at the Sheriff's Conference, and we saw more videos. This keeps, this keeps our, our court safe, and, and I am so appreciative of the fact that we're going to do this. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Here, we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, Si.
If I could, now that we've, we've passed that, just clarification, and so I'm going to use the, the new guy again, comment. My understanding is we, as commissioners, can add the full-time deputies, which we obviously just passed and did, with the consideration of our end that they're going to the district magistrate's offices. But technically, the sheriff will have the determination of where he puts his manpower, so. Did he leave?
Probably.
He's hiding back in the corner. So sheriff, if, if, you know, if I can just say, you know, we're committed that those five additional deputies will go to the magistrate's office. If there's further need for security within our county, we would have to evaluate that. Hopefully, that these people don't get moved away from those positions.
They won't, they won't undermine Ken here, they won't get moved away. And in future, sheriffs, I would certainly make that position known. Just their presence stops so much, and it becomes such a positive effort. And as we've increased our security team in the county system since I've been here my fifteen years, we've always done better, and the employee group has told us that, and the leadership has told us that.
I only push my emergency alarm when Mark comes in my office.
Which, which Mark?
Too many Mark's.
I was going to say, I didn't have a security button to push when, when Commissioner Messina comes into my office, but sometimes it makes me very scared.
I just wanted to say, for whatever it's worth, when, it is something that, I guess, societally, we don't really think about the, when we think about people who have dangerous jobs, we think of first responders. And we don't think about judges. And it never really crossed my mind, you know, I was fifty-two years old, and I never thought of the danger of judges. And until inauguration day, and when we got sworn in at the Community Arts Center afterwards, we, I was sitting around just talking to one of the judges, and we, I don't even know what we're, at this point, we might have been talking about basketball. And, and there was a deputy that was just standing there, like, watching. And we said, oh, are we holding you up? You can go. And he goes, no, no, I'll wait as long as you leave. And then when we were done, and he walked with us, as the judge went back to the courthouse. And they weren't walking with me, because, you know, we, we talk about budgets. Our job is, you know, is mathematical. And, but when you think about it, that they are dealing with people who are either disappointed or angry, or every day, all day. And I never, it never dawned on me the, what their job really entails, you think about rulings and knowing the law, but the, the personal emotional level of their, the results of their job. And it never hit me until that day when that judge had a deputy walk with him back to the courthouse. And it is, it is, it's vital that they feel protected, as the sheriff said, because we would never want the judge's ruling to be influenced by their fear of their own personal safety or the safety of those around them, because that would be a colossal failure of our system.
People walking into magistrate offices, district justice offices, walking into the courts, the courthouse, they're not walking in there because they got a certificate to pick up a trophy. They're walking in there because they're, they're, they're told they have to be, they're, they're angry, they're not happy about things, they're in a dispute of some kind. Really, the only, the only good things is there may be, the good things, they may be adopting a child, or they're getting a marriage certificate, or maybe a passport. Besides that, people that walk into these facilities are not happy campers. And they already have a chip on their shoulder, or there's some kind of dispute going on.
And again, for the, like, I've only, I've been in traffic court, but I've never been in real court. Do I have to answer that?
Please, the fit.
And you think about our society, I mean, just something as simple as a celebration yesterday in Kansas City, you know, and, and it rocks in the gunfire, and, you know, something that's supposed to be positive turns into negative, and that's the society we live in, unfortunately. So thank you, thank you for being here. Thank you. Okay, the fourth one here.
All right, Saturday Board, seeking your approval. In the prison, request to reclassify bail release positions from seventy-five hours per pay period to eighty hours per pay period effective February eighteen, twenty twenty-four. And this completes a reclassification of all positions within the prison system to eighty hours.
I'm abstaining.
I'll make the motion. I'll second. All in favor, Si. Aye. Opposed? I'm staying. You're staying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we will adjourn Saturday Board, convene the commissary public meeting for TDA actions.
All right, Commissioners, seeking your approval on the following TDA actions as outlined in the dispatch from C. In the Controller's Office, request to change the title of the following positions. Lead Fiscal Technician to Lead Payroll AP Specialist, effective February eighteen, twenty twenty-four. And Financial Technician to Payroll AP Specialist, effective eighteen, twenty-two. In Budget and Finance, request to change the title of the following position. Senior Accountant to Financial Analyst, effective February eighteen, twenty twenty-four. In the Sheriff's Office, request to add the following positions, five full-time deputies sheriffs, effective January one, twenty twenty-four. And in the prison, request to reclassify bail release positions from seventy-five hours per pay period to eighty hours per pay period, effective eighteen, February twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I'll motion. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, Si.
Aye.
Moving on to action six point three, or one through six point three. Tanya.
Morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Submitted for your approval. The first thing I have is a budget revision certification. This is in the amount of fifty dollars. I was here in January to do a budget revision for the STEP Homes in Need project. That project has been completed, and there was funds left that we reallocated to the Regional Sewer Lateral Reconstruction project. There was a mathematical error on my part, and fifty dollars was missed there, so I'm here to correct that error and to apologize for that, and get that fifty dollars moved from the STEP project to the Regional Sewer Lateral Reconstruction project.
I hope you've learned your lesson.
I have, thank you.
I have motion.
I have motion?
Oh, yeah, sure, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, Si.
Is fifty dollars, is it coming on her paycheck? Is that where the fifty dollars?
Oh, jeez.
Next.
Okay, the six point two, for your approval, is the subrecipient agreement with Montoursville Borough and the county. This is in the amount of eighty-one thousand, nine hundred, seventy dollars. This is the twenty twenty-two CDVG funds, so this would be the agreement between Montoursville Borough and the county for that amount.
Can I motion?
I'll make the motion.
No, second.
All in favor, Si.
And finally, I have.
You can say anything.
Oh, aye, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Finally, I have six point three. This is an amendment, this is the second amendment to the subrecipient agreement, also with Montoursville Borough and the county. This is for twenty twenty CDVG funds. This simply extends the agreement date from January first, twenty twenty-four, to October twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Can I motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, Si.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya, thank you. Good day.
Six point four, Commissioner, seeking your approval. And reappointments of the following individuals to the agricultural land preservation for Larry Fry, three-year term, effective one, one twenty-four through twelve, thirty-one, twenty-six. And Marilyn Ellie Eli, three-year term, effective eight, one, one twenty-four through twelve, thirty-one, twenty-six.
Can I motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, Si.
Aye.
Are you on this?
Constipation.
You're a constipation, okay.
Six point five and six point six.
One second. I want to thank, want to thank everybody for these two individuals for stepping forward and serving, and all the individuals that come forward and are serving on various boards throughout Lakeview County. We appreciate your time and expertise they bring to those boards.
And we are still looking for one vacancy. And I believe anybody that has residential, commercial, construction experience would be a welcome asset to United.
For which board?
For this.
For this board, okay, great, thank you. Okay, Maya, morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Six point five, vote to proven award funds to the following outside agencies. This is all part of the twenty twenty-four budget. Would you like me to go through each individual?
Yes, please.
Sure. Lakeview County Airport, one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. The Lakeview County Library System, one million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Law Enforcement Association, twenty-five thousand dollars. Historical Society, twenty thousand dollars. The Ready Rosie Program, sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars. Camp Cadet, three thousand dollars. Lakeview County Senior Citizen, ten thousand dollars. American Rescue Workers, twenty thousand dollars. Fire Tree Place, sixty thousand dollars. Industrial Development Authority, three thousand dollars. And the Community Arts Center, at thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, can I motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Now, Maya, could you explain where the money for the airport, what that?
Yeah, so part of the airport, that's part of our ATC services that we automatically have to provide to them, being in your airport. And then there's also, that's a portion of the funds we pay about, I pay that bills like eleven thousand, two hundred dollars essentially a month that we pay for the ATC services. And I believe the rest of it goes for some other management. And I believe the rest of it goes for some other management type things that's needed for the airports, so whatever's remaining, I don't know. Specifically, usually they send like an email identifying what they'll use the remainder funds, and I haven't got that this year, so, but usually it goes to things that were regulated to support.
Was it used in the past for the tower?
Yes, it was used in the past for the tower.
Yeah, and I think they had returned it because of COVID, they received COVID funds, so they returned it.
Yes, yes. So, I don't know if they're continuing to use it on that same project or not.
We have to have the tower.
And you have to have the tower to run the airport, yes.
And it is part of our local match requirement with federal money that come in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. All right, is there anyone from these agencies here in the audience who'd like to speak? I don't see any, okay. So, we have a motion, a second, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, six point six.
Vote to approve the following change orders with J and M Construction Specialty Incorporated for the T S P renovations project. Kenny, did you, are you okay with me doing this, or would you? Okay, all right. Change order one, it's ninety-five thousand, one hundred dollars. That's specific to the electronic security or the access control system. Change order two is eighteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. That's actually a credit, and that's due to that we removed the wall coverings and are using paint instead now. And change order three is three thousand, nineteen dollars, and that's to install some vinyl flooring in the first floor of that lobby area where all the tile work is. And then change order four is twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and that's as a result of some of the transition that we have had between budget and finance and the Controller's Office. We've had to just modify certain things.
Okay. Ken, can you come up for a second? I'm not going to let you off the hook.
Yes. I agree.
So, we appreciate you sending out the updates to the employees, letting them know what's going on on the third floor and the fourth floor and the renovations. Could you share with the public how things are progressing?
Yeah, in general, our third floor is pretty much on schedule. As you can see, we have some change orders for it, but in general, we plan for those change orders or the moves that we're doing, it's going to take some time. We are on our time schedule. Things are looking really well, and we expect to be done in Aprilish.
That's wonderful news.
Ready to move in.
Okay. We appreciate the team, everybody working together to make this happen, and we appreciate your leadership and your team, the work they've done too.
The team is working well. It's really getting things covered. I don't think anything's going through the cracks. I think everybody is bringing their expertise to it.
Yeah, and we appreciate you bringing to our attention some of the lighting that was kind of elaborate, that the three commissioners didn't feel that was necessary, especially in our part of the building, it was an additional cost. We're, we're, you know, basically simpletons. We don't need anything elaborate, anything more than the public wants to have, it's their money. And so, you adjusted that, made sure it was a proper lighting, plus it's also saving money, because it was, it was a conjunction of the rest of the building in unison, and we want to make sure that it looks nice, but it's the same as anybody else.
Absolutely.
I don't think that's what simpleton means, but.
A simple person.
Yeah, we're plain, we're very plain, but I don't think.
Simpleton, we don't need to have anything elaborate.
No, I would say that Ken is very good at saving money. He, he works very efficiently, and I know, I don't know what you've heard, but the, the staff is very appreciative of the updates that you've been sending, because, you know, you just hear things, but nobody knows how it's going, and, and we have heard back that the people really appreciate the emails.
It's a, it's a big change, and people are kind of curious how it's going and what's going on with it.
Absolutely. And the money you would save, like, the lights you brought to us, if we would install those lights, they would have used as much electricity as four other floors.
Yes, absolutely, correct.
So, and that's absolutely a waste, no need for that, so, by you bringing that to our attention and making that adjustment, we're able to, you know, save money in that way too. And I think the last one, though, you only sent to the three of us, the last update?
Yes.
Just that one, so you may, you may want to send that out to everybody as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
How about a quick update on courthouse plumbing project?
Oh, okay, yeah, courthouse plumbing project, as most people are aware that work for the county, we've had backups of storm water, wastewater into our basement when we get high water or large storms coming through. And in the process of doing that, we're changing our laterals out to the main line out in the street. We are raising it so that when the water does rise, it does not come back into the courthouse. And so far, we are, I think, starting Monday, we're going to start digging outside, trenching out to the street. Hopefully, this project will be coming to completion next week.
That's great news. When I work, when I work next door, we have a storage room down there, and if you had a heavy thunderstorm, the back elevator sound like a waterfall.
It was.
You couldn't use it, you could actually hear the water going down into it, that would come out onto the floor with sewage, and we're trying to clean up, block it from getting in our storage room. And that's been an ongoing problem for many, many, many years. It never was corrected, needed to be corrected, and we're thankful that we responded to being done properly.
It will be nice to not have to deal with that, for certain.
Absolutely.
Wait until you were gone to fix it.
I screamed about a long time. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Terry, thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Six point seven and eight, John.
Wait a minute, we didn't do a motion. A motion on six point six.
Yes, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Now, on six point seven, thank you.
Casey Longmiller, you're here, you can come up. I'll, I'll just read off a few things and make the details for you.
Good morning, Casey.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, seven volunteer fire companies in western Lakeview County were successful in getting approximately nine hundred thousand dollar grant for radio upgrades to move to the new digital standard. One of those fire departments is in Clinton County, but they approached us looking for assistance to cover costs for, for overruns and their local cost share for that effort. And as, as a pairing with the big radio purchase that we did with the other fire, volunteer fire companies last week, we considered this a viable funding opportunity for, for ARPA funds. So, we're asking that the Commissioners award a total amount of ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents to six of those volunteer fire companies as broken down in the agenda. And if you'd like to say anything?
Yeah, easy. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, thank you for having me. This is a kind of the culmination of about a four-year project that we were working on to upgrade our radio equipment up there. The amount that we received in the grant was roughly eight hundred and sixty thousand. The total grant project was about nine hundred and six thousand, I believe. And again, we were responsible for a five percent share on that. In twenty twenty, we had applied for the grant, we were initially denied. In twenty twenty-one, we reapproached. Late in twenty twenty-two, we were awarded the grant, but from the time we had initially gotten the quotes to the time we actually got the award, the price of the equipment went up, and then the, also, the grant didn't cover quite all of the equipment that we needed. So, the amount listed here that we're asking for your approval on would cover the five percent match while some of the equipment that wasn't covered. The reason this grant project for us was so vital is because some of the award amounts that we got through this grant project is more than like several of these fire companies have in their operating budget annually. So, this was a big deal for several of these fire companies. I know specifically for Citizens Hoes and Jersey Shore A M S, our portion of the grant funding was almost two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars worth of radio equipment, and that would have been a substantial hit to our organization. So, I thank you for your consideration on this. I've talked to the other partners who were involved in this project, and they're extremely grateful for your consideration in this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and John, this will be out of the ERBA funds.
Yep. We're looking at a few different ways to fund this out of there. Primarily, this might come through the county reserve side, but I'm going to have a more detailed conversation with Casey here in a little bit about possibly adding it to the twelve million dollar side. I guess it's a little bit too much detail, but with, with the approval of this today, I'll be reaching out to each fire company individually, and kind of like what we did when we gave out the F thirteen grant, I'll have a drawdown request form and a, a statement, and basically, we can also verify if, if A C H information has changed, I was just thinking about that today. But then we'll just reach out to each one individually and, and get it taken care of that way.
And Casey, please pass on everyone up there, and, and again, across the county, our sincere thanks to the A M S volunteers, the fire workers, you know, what they do is, is priceless. They're the backbone of the communities, we need them, there's not enough of them, and we appreciate every, everyone, including yourself. We'll say thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the second one, is Todd Badger in the room?
Yes, he's back here. Tom.
And Chad Everhart here is, is as, as well from, from the Y M C A. I'll just, I'll keep my, my part of this short and give you an opportunity for the planned expansion, but I'm asking for the Commissioners to approve a hundred thousand dollar grant to the Y M C A for the expansion of their eastern Lakeview facilities. These funds are going to come out of the American Rescue Fund dollars as well and help primarily support the engineering and design aspects of their projects.
Hey, good morning, Todd. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, morning. Appreciate the opportunity and the consideration as well. So, just a quick snapshot of what we're looking to do, the facility here is add an additional twenty thousand square feet to the existing structure that we have currently. That's going to be roughly six and a half million dollars in expansion costs, broken down into three phases. Phase one is going to consist of adding two additional childcare or preschool classrooms into the facility. We already have two, which are maxed out at our forty kids. We have a thirty-three kid backlog right now for our preschool, much like the rest of the county, there's a huge backlog. Hopefully, we can clear some of that up. We're also going to add some preschool offices in there. Because we're a state licensed education facility, we require the teachers to have rooms for lesson planning and meeting with parents, they currently don't have anything private that they can use. So, we're going to give those teachers what they need in order to be successful with its kids. Add an additional five thousand square feet of wellness space. That's something, Commissioner Metzger, you're well versed in that we don't have enough of that, and we didn't from day one. So, we're hoping to try to add five thousand more square feet in there and, and kind of bring in some more functional training, get the younger kids in, the high school kids, and then that way, we can continue the health and wellness growth throughout the community there. That first phase will also consist of adding eight privatized showers and changing rooms in lieu of a, an open space locker room like we currently have. We really feel like that's kind of the direction that the public's going these days. People don't really tend to, to like the large open locker rooms, they prefer to have the, the private changing area, so we're going to look at doing that. Phase two is going to consist of adding a couple thousand square feet of community space where we can hold events, programs for our Live Strong programs that we have. We can also look at utilizing that for our before and after school care programs. When school districts close, those children have to go somewhere, so they come to our branch, and we don't have enough space for all of those. We could also use that for our summer camp. We have roughly a hundred children that we bring through our summer camp that currently has utilized the basketball court all day long, which then takes away from the opportunities for folks to use that for wellness purposes. We also want to add a covered awning off the side of that, which will take place of the, the tent that we have to put up every year and take down, and then, we have a lot of yard there, but it's very uneven, so depending upon where we put the tent, the kids have to swim through mud puddles to get to it, so if we get a lot of rain, so hopefully that'll take care of that. But we could also use that for community events as well, birthday parties and graduations, family reunions, whatever. And the third phase would add a, an additional basketball court into there. The one place that gets used the most in my facility is the basketball court, there's never open time in there between, between childcare and pickleball and, and youth basketball leagues and adult basketball leagues and volleyball programs, there's never open space. We want to add a second basketball court into there so we can fulfill those needs as well. I have just information here, kind of breaks down a little bit more, I hope I can hand across the desk here, but just in case you have any more questions here. Thank you.
Every March, you have your annual awards dinner. And I've been privileged to attend that the last couple of years, and to hear the stories of how the Y touches our community, the lives it changes, is incredible. It's amazing. All walks alike. The Y is a fantastic facility, you know, we have one Jersey Shore, there's one in Lockhaven, the one in Eastwood, the one east for my company. And to hear those stories is very moving. So, to hear that this Y has been expanded and it's going to address many needs in our area, childcare, which is a major, major need, is very encouraging. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, I think when people think of the Y, one of the issues, not issues, one of the perceptions of childcare is it's, they're where they just drop the kids off while they go work out. And it's so much more than that. And, you know, like, as everyone knows, the aspect of this society, but, so with this expansion, it's not just a bigger room for your kid to play for an hour of wild, while you can get on the treadmill, it's, it's the all-day classes and the, and the.
My people work.
Yes, it's the, the necessary for our working class and for our kids and for their development. So, it is, it's so much more of a contributing factor to society than just a place that people can go lift weights.
Absolutely. We have great relationships with the school districts that we serve and the children that come out of our preschool program, not to boast, McKim Dempsey, my childcare director runs an outstanding program there. They go into kindergarten way more prepared than, than most kids.
You said you have forty kids now?
Yes, sir, we do.
With the expansion, at the end of this project, you know, how many, you have a goal?
Yeah, we could double that. With two new rooms, we could do up to twenty. I don't know if we'll do another, we'll, we'll do more preschool rooms, or if we'll do like a younger toddler that can help offset that, we'll, I think we'll determine that need once the bill is approaching its end and we start hiring staff.
Very good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Chad, thank you for being here also.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Lastly, Jason.
You're always last, always last.
It's all good. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Director. Commissioner, before you for six, oh, you know, six point nine, vote to approve Citizens Northern Bank Line of Credit proposal in the amount of forty million dollars for the Department of Environmental Protection for our post-closure requirements. So, part of the requirements that we have to operate in the landfill is every year, we must provide a financial protective net or, or a financial guarantee to the Department of Environmental Protection that if we were to close the doors and walk away, that they would have the funds available to them to close up and maintain the facility for the remaining days of its operation. This is something that is required in all landfills in the state of Pennsylvania, and it's based off of your liability of how much you have closed, how much you don't have to close, what you've got to do yet for that to complete the project. This money that we are, this line of credit, letter of credit, actually, is an idea and a project that was started with Steve Sims as our businessman, former business manager at R M S, to help with controlling this. So, our, our bonds and our, our financials were a mix-up of several items, and it was the department's wish is that we would start to make it more of just one item that they can control. So, in our annual report, we show that we have a liability of around thirty-five million. Now, next year, when we open Field Twelve, we're going to be into the forty million mark, next year when we open Field 12, we're gonna be into the 40 million mark, and this will take place, um, this will have it covered. So with us, we have, um, Bruce from Citizens Northern, and Chris is our business manager at R M S, and she finished it, got this project across the line, this was a complete teamwork effort, uh, started out with, uh, Steve Sims, uh, the treasurer, and the other, I know this is Mr. Sims, several folks was in the committee, Director McDermott was in with helping it move across and, and get it to, to completion, so it's just a, it was a big project, it was something we've never done here before, the $40 million is in our possession, we have those funds, so we are not taking a loan out, we're not borrowing the money, we're simply putting it all in the hands of C N N, they're giving us the, the letter of credit so that they're, we're good for it and we'll submit it, and then annually there will be minor adjustments to it, some years it may be down in the 20 millions, either way, as we close our fund, or close our facility, we won't need as much. So anyways, um, Chris, you wanna talk about the more of the financials of it? She looks thrilled.
Yep. First time. Um, the letter of credit is, um, of course, every year gets renewed depending on the amount, um, there is a fee, but, um, the interest from the investments will pay for the fee. Is there any questions? Jason pretty much covered it.
I mean, didn't you explain, this was started historically because people would abandon the landfill and then?
Yes, there was, there was issues with town leaders that had small landfills that walked away from, and then D E P setting or trying to clean up, so it was, it was enacted, we, we must provide for every year. The good news is, we want everybody to say, we have those funds, okay? It's just simply this is a, a compliance requirement for the Department of Environmental Protection. And I think it's important to note that this is not a new requirement, um, we have always been required to, uh, maintain closure, post-closure funds, um, we are just packaging it differently, and, uh, you know, the work with the bank has been, uh, why we're able to do that, and, uh, it makes it easier for everybody, uh, cleaner accounting, less work to do with, uh, insurances, these down at D E P and tracking when to reinvest and all that.
Mr. Sims has graciously stopped by to visit us, and he was involved in this, would you like to say any comments on it? Just wanna give you the opportunity, if you'd like to.
You just wanna see it across the finish line?
Okay, thank you. And anyone from the bank like to make a statement?
Morning.
Morning. I just wanna mirror what Jason had to say, this took a while, we started back in August, at least with the bank side, and everyone that was involved, Matt was involved, Jason and Carissa, Steve, Eric Anderson, um, the bond counsel was also involved, so everyone played a very important part, and as C N N Bank, we're very grateful for the relationship we have, and we look forward to the continued relationship.
Okay, thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All of your side?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Kerry, thank you.
And also I might like to add, um, as a member of the independent host fire company that's receiving part of the funds you approved today, thank you, it's a little hard to do gun ticket sales, hot bug sales, barbecues, no other public work service does fundraising in the fire departments, and it gets a little old trying to do fundraising just to survive, and if any of you get an opportunity to speak to any of your local fire departments, talk to them about the cost of apparatus, you're now looking at any truck costs a million dollars, our turnout gear is over five grand, um, it's, it's insane, I also would like to give a quick report, Saturday I helped, I was part of the lithium battery training that was, at, at a place that you funded, uh, outstanding training, there was a huge representation from Lake Homing County Fire Services, uh, tow truck services there, we had six employees from R M S there present, there is a, um, a lot going on with lithium battery fires, the safety of lithium batteries, we will bring forth through R M S staff, I believe, next week, um, more of an education for pushing out the lithium battery collection that we're gonna be doing, and how, what we're allowed to collect, when we're allowed to collect it, and how we're gonna package it, but the training that you afforded to come in was some of the best I've had, of all the trainings we've attended in fire service, he was one of the best instructors, really good, and it's eye-opening, and I wouldn't, if I was you, I wouldn't let your lithium battery sit on the chargers in the garage or anything, just sitting there, so, and it gave me a lot to think about in my own home setting, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And again, uh, any way you can support your local fire company, please do so, a lot of them have, um, different fundraisers and different meals, and, oh, Lake Homing's getting ready to start their fish fry, or they started, I guess, yesterday, and they have one this Friday, and they'll have them continuously Fridays until Easter, so, any way you can support your local fire company, please do so, yes?
I would add to that, independent fire company is one of our polling places, that's South Williams Square Third Ward, and we are very fortunate in this county that a lot of fire halls all over are willing to volunteer their facilities for use on Election Day.
Thank you for adding that, of course, very good point. Okay, Commissioner Collins, Jimmy Collins.
I don't think I do.
I do now, that's okay. Move on to, uh, general public, we need comments from general public. Yes? I ask you to please keep it to county issues and keep it brief, please.
Morning, Tom Adams, Williamsport, um, I have my notes with me, lost my pen, um, proverbs, uh, I lost it, anyway, um, the king that takes bribes will ruin the country, and, or ruin anything that, and a king doesn't necessarily mean the rule of the country, it's anyone who imposition authority, and anyone that takes bribes will, will destroy what's good and right, um, and I know this, the president we have doesn't even want to meet with our sheriffs, because the sheriff was just down at the sheriff's conference, and, um, Christopher Wray of the FBI has warned the sheriffs and the law enforcement of the dangers of, uh, terrorists and, and all kinds of red alerts are going off in the, on in the country, but, uh, I mean, kind of, we can't wonder why because of open course border, uh, so when, when someone doesn't really care about the safety of their citizens or citizenry, you gotta scratch your head and wonder why, he continues to make millions of dollars, um, so it's up to us as communities to look out for each other and, and probably step up, um, more awareness to, uh, come to the aid of others when there's, when there is need, just like when the judges were talking about, uh, you know, needing for, uh, security there at their offices, and I think that's important, um, hopefully, I kind of think that maybe we could, uh, look into more having, uh, as we have volunteer fire companies, we've got more of a citizenry, um, militias, for lack of a better term, not have people, so you don't have people go all nuts out, you know, on their own, you want to have something organized, it's working with the county, working with local law enforcement, so people have, uh, some feeling of safety and security, um, I think it's important. But the other thing I wanted to bring up is that, uh, I may be a Trump supporter, and I think that there are a lot of things he did was good for our country, but I, I really take offense when people today wanna say he's the greatest president ever, we had two presidents to be honored in this month, and 12th, the 12th is Lincoln's birthday, and the 20th, next Thursday, is Washington's birthday, and that kind of, kind of bothers me, we, we stopped doing it like that, but, uh, I, I can understand the concept, but, um, Lincoln, there's been a lot of things said about him, that, that he started the war, he didn't start the war, the South started the war, and they, they hated him, and about half the country hating him, but, uh, fortunately, he won out, and, and, uh, we do have a country that was able to conquer slavery, but we want to honor the truth and, and, uh, really dig into the history and see what those things were really about, um, because you have a lot of detractors, today will say that it was all about states' rights, you know, they wanted the states, wanted to have the right to control people, not have to work, do their own labor and force it onto others, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Any online?
No.
Okay, we completed our agenda, so our next meeting will be Thursday, February 22nd, at, uh, 10 a.m. right here in this room, thank you, everyone, attending.
So, do you want, uh, there? Well, it's a yearly. It's, it's between a single, like, count.
I don't, oh, I have no, I don't know.